Committee for Tuesday, January 21st. Our first order of business will be to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Please join us if you're able.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic, for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, great. So in our consent agenda tonight, our meeting minutes from our last meeting. Thank you, Kathy. Budget transfers, thank you, Jenny. And a volunteer activity form for a new member. If you remember, in the past, one of the past meetings, we briefly discussed, not briefly, we discussed and voted to add a student seat to the Westford Town DEI Committee. And so this is a volunteer activity form from Kate Kelly to fill that slot. And I believe the Select Board has already approved that. So this is our joint appointment. Any questions or concerns on the consent agenda? Or a motion?
So moved.
Seconded.
Do you need to follow?
Well, just motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Thank you, Catherine.
Seconded.
And Bill, great, thank you. All in favor? Okay, six to zero, thank you. Next up is our usual public comment. A reminder that tonight's public comment at this point in the agenda is for non-start times related topics or items. We keep this on the agenda for individuals to share their thoughts. We appreciate speakers being limited to two minutes per person. And if you're on virtual and would like to speak, please raise your hand and you'll be promoted and unmuted. Or in person at the microphone, please come up and sign in. So we'll give a minute to see if anyone is interested. No hands?
Nope.
Will be in the room? Okay. All right.
I just want to appreciate for a second that Sean is in front of Sean. Who would then be in front of Sean. So when you look up there, it's like Sean, the way that it lined up, you were right behind yourself.
Never ending.
Wow. Infinite Sean.
Sorry.
That's good.
It's been a long day.
We're gonna do that. It has. We're gonna start with students and get Daniel home for his midterms.
Yeah, so yesterday was a great day off, an observation of what? Junior Day. And then also on the 29th, we will also have a day off for an observation of Lunar New Year. So midterms are in full swing right now. Four are down, three more to go, so everyone should just hang in there. On the 28th, at 6:30 in the PAC, WOA counselors will have, they'll be hosting a meeting for parents, and they'll be discussing like all things college related, like admissions, all of these events that they have coming up. And lastly, the Winter Semi Formal is scheduled for this Friday at 7:00 PM, and it's hosted by Sad and Stuko. And it's a great opportunity for underclassmen because the upperclassmen had their own semi-formal early in this year, so it's just, you know, evening it out, I guess.
Great. Thank you. Thanks for joining us. Good luck. We'll move on to superintendent updates.
Thank you. We'd like to congratulate Sheila McGovern. The Massachusetts School Library Association announced that our Sheila McGovern, who's the Library Media Specialist at Christopher Folean Robinson, has been named one of their 10 president, has been giving one of the 10 President Awards for 2024. And that award specifically honors MSLA members who have been identified as rising stars and are in the career, they've only been in the career for one to five years and have made a significant impact on student learning through a quality school library program. So that information came to us, and I said that I wanted to share that with all of you at a school committee meeting. We congratulate Ms. McGovern and thank her for all of the work that she's doing to support all of our students. Another update, just kind of reminding everybody, I have sent out two updates so far about the Power School data breach. We're still waiting for information from Power School. They are conducting their own, they're using a third party to conduct investigation, and they're going to be providing districts with a full report of that investigation. And when we have that information, we'll share more information with members of our community, and/or Power School might actually be reaching out directly as well, too. That's something we've been talking about. We've been in regular contact with our legal counsel and even our insurance providers. There was a question as to why it took Power School so long to actually contact districts. They're really supposed to do that within five days, and they didn't do that within five days. So that's been an insurance question that has kind of come up, people have been asked that question. But I appreciate everybody's patience, and, you know, when we have more information, we'll provide that to everybody.
Thank you.
And unfortunately, the flu has hit Westford Public Schools in a pretty big way right now. We were hopeful that the long weekend, in addition to some targeted cleaning over the weekend and prior to the weekend, would have helped, but absences continued with both staff and students today. So I did speak with Joan Mitchell today, Westford Academy Nurse and Nurse Lead for the district. She did confirm that it is flu strand A that is presenting itself with and without fevers. And so families are just asked to keep that in mind and to remember back to some of the precautions that we had during COVID time, possibly, well, definitely staying home if your student has a fever, experiencing any kind of vomiting or diarrhea for at least 24 hours after that has stopped to hopefully stop the spread of this flu.
Great, thank you.
Also, it's not too late for the flu vaccine, if families are interested in that.
Thank you. School committee updates. Sean, any?
Superintendent Eval Committee, Matt, although Dr. Chu, I won't still, later in today's agenda.
Yeah.
Say you could, that'd be fine.
It'd be great to add that context when we get to that topic.
Sure.
Yeah, thanks. Mari, any update?
I attended the Westford CAT Board Meeting last Thursday night. They are going through their strategic planning process. They're looking for a vision for the next five to 10 years. And one of the things they're trying to do is become the newspaper of record for Westford. And they're trying to put out a trial newspaper, which could hopefully have a subscription base just for cost of paper and print, and it will be a 12-week trial. I'm not sure when that's exactly happening, but that's very exciting news.
Please keep us interested.
Yes.
Yep. And a reminder for anyone listening that's not already a subscriber, they put out a great morning newsletter that I think captures stuff going on in town.
And they do their Sunday.
Yep.
Digital version, too.
Mm-hmm. And any updates that aren't already on the agenda?
No, so policy met on Wednesday, and we came back to revisit our P5325, the transgender and non-conforming students. We, I know we had put a pause on it for a vote, so we're gonna have to meet once more, I think, to kind of come with our final version, move some questions to reach out and clarify. There's been some obviously changes law-wise and stuff as well, and so it'll be coming back in probably two or three meetings, hopefully. And I just have one.
Two to three more meetings of policy?
No, of, yeah, School for.
School for. We're meeting next week.
Yeah. And we'll see where we're at then.
Mm-hmm.
And policy aside, just because it's of interest, the Commission on Disability have started a group called the Sociability Society. And the point of it is kind of creating inclusive social events for residents in Westford and surrounding towns, typically who are kind of, you know, that later teenage into their twenties age bracket. So this Friday at First Parish Church at nine o'clock for ninth grade and upwards, they're doing a movie night, I think it's Guardians of the Galaxy, there'll be snacks, there's no costs involved. And so any high schoolers who want a break from all the study that's happening, you know, more than welcome, it's an inclusive event by the Commission on Disability.
What time was that?
Seven.
Thanks. I was gonna give a brief update that the Robinson School Building Committee has continued meeting. I don't think I've been able to share the great news that I am also the Chair of that committee. Why am I not surprised? So.
We're very grateful.
You know, it wasn't, it wasn't a fight.
Is this like a reverse mutiny type?
Or are you the last person to?
Yeah. So we're carrying on, it's great. And we are presenting to Capitol tomorrow morning for their consideration in advance of what that feasibility study ask will be for annual town meeting, which reminds me that at some point, we should probably have this committee take a formal vote on, like, you know, at the bottom of the annual town meeting, information will say which committees have recommended this article, so.
Before we do that, could we actually have a kind of, some sort of a dive presentation conversation about that, what that actually looks like? Because the information I kind of have discovered in terms of costs feels very different to what I kind of, based on our previous one, that SMMA one that we did.
Yep.
And so I think it would be really helpful if we could kind of get a breakdown in, you know, the difference in costs and.
I think tomorrow, I think we're preparing a lot of that information in advance of Capitol tomorrow, so we have a budget breakdown for what would be covered. I want to be, make sure we're being clear that the SMA, SMMA report was a facilities assessment, but this next step is really architects, OPM, site design, site surveys, geographical.
Building specific as opposed to SMMA was looking at the entire district.
Right.
And this is something MSBA requires of us.
Yes.
Yes. So it's like, would, would kick off like the next module if town meeting voters approve it, so.
It might make sense, I mean, if timing works, it might make sense to layer that into the presentation that we do about the space utilization work. All, we want to do all of that before town meeting to, to share that with you, and maybe, maybe those things could happen at the same time?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And that leads my segue into the next update is that the, our Space Usage Working Group, which is myself, Jeff Goodwin, and Dr. Chu.
You're the Chair of that, too?
Yeah. We have three buildings left, so we've been through six of our buildings, and we hope.
Just two.
I think this week is Blanchard and Robinson, and the next week is WA.
Correct. We go to Robinson so often that I forget that we actually haven't.
Yeah.
We've been there for other reasons, but thank you.
So we hope to bring an update on all of that to you soon. And last update, more for the seven of you, six of you than for the public, but a reminder to mark your calendar for this Thursday night for our FinCom budget hearing. That is hybrid, so feel free to let me know if you plan to attend virtually or in person at Town Hall. And we're also scheduled for the following Thursday for any follow-up. So that's January 30th. Okay. We're gonna move on to our business section of the agenda and touch on the mail courier and custodial supervisor job description updates. So this was part of last meeting, it was been in the packet. Any updates from administration or any feedback from the committee?
Just a reminder, we had shared with you what the changes are.
Thank you.
You know, previously, and so I don't know if anybody has any questions or.
Yep. Just giving everybody a minute to orient themselves.
You don't want me to pull it up or anything, do you?
No, that's fine. Okay, if there are no questions, I will take a motion to approve both job descriptions.
So moved.
Thanks, Tom and Mari. Okay, all in favor? Okay, thank you for bringing those to us. And next, we will discuss the mid-year review of the superintendent goals.
I guess I'm up. The, like I said at the beginning of the meeting, the Superintendent Evaluation Committee did meet earlier on this week for some context. We've been meeting probably every few months. The superintendent's formal final eval of the committee of us seven traditionally happens in late May, early June. And the, the idea behind these meetings that are occurring now in January is to hear from the superintendent about what he believes his progress has been towards the, the goals that he's set with feedback from us. So with that said, hopefully we can hear from the superintendent, and I believe there is a slide presentation on this. Yeah, oh, great. Yeah, perfect, I'm fine with that.
So, so yes, thank you. We met, we met last week, I think we had a really nice conversation. I was able to share with them this slide presentation, and I got some, I think I got some great feedback. A lot of it was even sort of questions that, helping to think in terms of the data that will be shared later on in the spring. So tonight, I'm not, I don't have data to be sharing with you, this is more like the talking points, kind of reminding people what the goals were, and then talk about where we're at in that process, very similar to what you did with the, with the school committee goals as well, too. But there will be different measurables and data and different pieces like that, that'll be coming as we get closer and we do the, you know, the final, the final review of the goals. So if we go to the first slide, or the second slide. Thank you. So as a reminder, the, the first goal is the professional practice goal, and it's calibrating the leadership by June 2025. Each curriculum coordinator will have joined two instructional classroom walkthroughs with the superintendent and one of the building principals. Each learning walk will include a debriefing conversation, calibrating participants' feedback, identifying universal design for learning, or UDL, principles in the observed practices. So again, for some context, remember that as part of our strategic plan, we have this multi-year process of rolling out UDL to make, to really help Westford become a universal design for learning district. While it's been pockets of things that have existed here for a long time, based on different teachers' experiences with their own professional development or their own training, it's not something that the district has embraced district-wide. And so we've been focusing on first, the, the leadership, making sure that we're building capacity amongst our leadership team to help, well, lead this work. And then now talking about, as we look at the different components, this year focusing on engagement, how is that going to be rolled out at the building level? And a, a big part of this building, building capacity was trying to calibrate as we're all looking at engagement, what does that look like? So over a year ago, some of our curriculum coordinators developed an engagement tool, which I shared with you at the very beginning of the year. This link here actually has the updated version, which is just slightly different, and I'll talk about that for a couple of minutes. The, we had great conversations. So the, we've already done the first round, so all of the curriculum coordinators have joined me in different buildings. Not all of the principals have done it because, well, there's, there's fewer, right? So the curriculum coordinators kind of cross over, and so we spent more time in, in some of the elementary schools. We went to most of the buildings, but we didn't do with all the buildings. But all of the principals have used this engagement tool. So we've used this as the, as the principals were doing leadership's walkthroughs, because I rotate all the principal meetings that we have every couple of weeks, we go to a different building, and we've been doing that for a couple of years now. And so we've kind of used this tool as well. We all came together at one of our full leadership teams and had great conversation about what, what was coming out of these conversations, talking about what does academic risk-taking look like? What are the different things that we're seeing? How might we, what, you know, do we think that we're seeing engagement, or are we looking at strategic compliance? You know, what, what is the levels of engagement that we're seeing? And one of the things we found was that the original engagement tool that we're looking at wasn't really meeting our needs, so we made some adjustments to it. We just added some more context to, to that. So, so the, the people who are coming together and they're all looking at the same thing, they can identify, okay, is this introductory activity? Is this something in the middle of a lesson? Is this a standalone activity? Different things like that. And then when we were looking at the, that the, towards the end of the, the engagement tool, we were realizing that the, the list that we had was asking us, are we looking at, are we seeing engagement? Are we seeing strategic compliance, or just ritual compliance, or retreatism, or rebellion? And one of the things that we talked about is that when you're looking at a classroom setting, we are fortunate that we don't typically see retreatism or rebellion in, in our classrooms. We might see individuals who might not necessarily be engaged, but we don't see that as an entire class. So we felt like we wanted to adjust the questions that we're asking to say more specifically focusing on, are we seeing the majority of the students engaged? Or are the majority of the students strategically complying? And we looked at, talked about, what is that difference? And so that, all of these conversations helped us kind of reshape this tool that we're gonna now use in the spring when we go for round two, and we engage the, all of the principals. So if they hadn't participated, they'll participate now. Everyone who did participate wants to do it again. The principals themselves are now looking to use this, this practice with their building team, their building-based team to kind of share it. And the other piece of it is that they've all talked about the curriculum coordinators, and the principals have talked about talking through, this is not an evaluative tool, and so that's one of the things we've been very clear about at the beginning, is that we're not going through this and using this for an evaluation at all. We're not attaching teachers' names to it, we're keeping it very general, but we're looking at the different areas that we're talking about. But they all talked about wanting to be able to share what these looks, look fours are with the teachers. And I think the best example we keep coming back to is just this notion of academic risk. And we had all these conversations, as what does that look like? It looks like different things in different classrooms. And so talking about that, and/or are we seeing self-reflection taking place? And are there ways in which if the teachers know that that's something that is a piece of the engagement strand for universal design for learning, then are they thinking about that in their practices as well, too? And it's kind of just a, it's a, it's a, potentially a slight shift just in asking students to think quickly as they transition from one activity to another about how they felt about that activity. So these are some of the conversations that have been taking place. And then the other pieces that I have, that I shared on there is just the notion of we've been utilizing a, a book called the UDL Playbook that's been helpful as we talk about what does this look like rolling this out? And the, we, well, the next piece, I'm gonna talk a little bit more about CAST, so I won't get into that yet. But so that's goal one, in general. When I did this, when we did this in our subcommittee, we felt it was helpful to ask questions with each goal, as opposed to waiting till the end. So I don't know if anybody has any questions or anything, we could go ahead and entertain that now, if that's okay with you.
Yeah. You spoke to this a little bit in your intro, but can you think about, can you tell me what you're thinking about for evidence for this?
So I'm gonna try to bring as much of the data from even the engagement tool together, making sure that it's, that it's not identifiable, right? And looking at talking how, how in which we've made these adjustments, even sharing what this has looked like, then transitioning to the building level in ways, that's kind of the second goal as well, too. But those are different things that we've talked about.
Okay.
That was my question.
Okay.
Onto the next one?
Mm-hmm. So the second goal is continuing our, our focus on sense of belonging. And so the sense of belonging and engagement by June 2025 with increased exposure to universal design for learning, UDL district-wide, collaborative problem solving, CPS, in grades K to five, and a continued focus on community circles in grade six through 12. All students will exhibit in an age-appropriate awareness of intentional strategies that support student engagement and sense of belonging. So one of the things even to talk about, what does that look like? Well, one of the things we're going to be doing is looking at, how are we figuring out if students are, are able to identify these intentional strategies? So we're gonna be developing some type of student survey that's age-appropriate, and talking about, are they, are they aware of the adjustments that are being made with, with UDL? Are they, what is their awareness of the, the way in which collaborative problem solving is starting to be incorporated into the student experience, and similar to that with community, community circles? So that's the piece that we're kind of looking at, is are students aware of these intentional strategies in the first place? Now, the progress that we've made so far is that CAST, which is the Center of Applied, what's the S? Technologies is the T, specialized technologies.
I looked it up, and they said CAST is now the name of their company, they used to be an acronym.
They used to be an acronym, and now they just go, yeah, they do say that.
As I wanted to know.
So we, they're actually, I shared with you earlier on, too, when we were first coming up with these goals, but CAST is really, they're, they're the pioneers of, of, of universal design for learning. They're the ones who really kind of started this whole, this whole movement. And so we engaged with them, they had a keynote, we had a keynote individual come and do, talk to full K to 12 in two different sessions, and then early, at our first PD day that we had. And they provided some additional follow-up with the leadership team, and provided us with tons of resources that we're still using. We're using just last week for our, for the school-wide implementation criteria that they have to help focus it more down at the, at the school level. So that's continued work that they've been providing with us. Think Kids is who we said that we were gonna engage with, we have engaged with them to help with professional development for our school-based teams. We had a, an initial Zoom meeting where a number of people were able to kind of get a, a, a better introduction to collaborative problem solving. And then our elementary schools have been able to develop school-based teams to help create leaders within the buildings there. And we've also continued to work with Pathways to Restorative Communities. They've developed a multi-year plan to help support our middle school and Westford Academy in really developing how we're going to support these community circles as they become part of the fabric of, of the programming there. But then this idea that we're gonna be surveying our students to get a sense of, and I think parents as well, too, would be helpful, to get a sense of their understanding and their awareness of these shifts that are, that are taking place. Another piece to this goal, and it really even supports the first goal as well, too, but for the second goal is we talked about engagement being conversations that are taking place at the building level more and more. Well, the, the, the leadership team, we spent some of our meeting time developing what their next faculty meetings are gonna look like as they are digging deeper as to what things they should be able to, to support, and the different things that they might be seeing. They're gonna be doing a self-assessment with the teachers of sorts to find out where people are at with the different strategies in the first place.
When are you thinking of doing that survey? What kind of timeline are you thinking, Dr. Chu?
I was thinking later in the spring, and with all of the things that we're trying to do right now, it's one of those things that I'm like, oh, boy.
Spring 26.
When do you do that in order to then, so?
So you think potentially by the end of the year, like we might have some of this as evidence?
Oh, I think. Yeah, yeah, I, my, my initially, initially, I was hoping that we would do some type of a survey so that then I could include that information at the end of the year with, with this process. If, if not, I'll have a specific plan as to when we are gonna do that. Yeah.
Any other comments on goal two?
This is the end of, is my understanding this year at the middle school is the end of that Pathways?
No, we had talked about, we had, when we originally looked at it with the, because this was coming, a lot of this support was coming from the ARPA funding.
Yeah.
And so it was, it was a three-year piece, and this is only year two. So we have that additional year.
Okay.
Yeah.
It might be nice that, maybe at the end of year three, that it would be lovely to hear some kind of feedback from the staff themselves about what they liked.
That's something that we had talked about when I talked about how to measure these goals, is one of the things is getting some of that information from the staff, participation in this work as well, too.
Because, because I think it even would go to like other professional development that we plan within the district of what's, what works, what doesn't, and.
But I'm glad that you asked that question, because some of the feedback that we had in our subgroup was even just talking about, even tonight, especially as we're, you're gonna be voting on the budget, reminding people where the funding sources are coming from, right? And so the Pathways to Restorative Communities, that was ARPA-funded, right? Think Kids is, has been, that's also, was part of the ARPA funding that we looked at. And then the work that we're doing with CAST, we have grants for professional development, and so we utilize that for that.
But it's gonna be really good to know, like, what the, the feedback is as we get into year four of, do we renew or do something different?
And related to that, that point, Chris, for funding, so when something's like tagged as ARPA funding and the like, it's not like we can just stop using that and direct those funds elsewhere, right?
No, because we've.
These are decisions that we've made prior to this point to allocate them towards.
And actually, at this point with the, with the ARPA funding, everything had to, the, the funding actually, everything had to have been, I guess, technically appropriated and encumbered by December of this year. And so we're now, it doesn't have to be fully expended until, for the other, for the next two years, but that's why we knew that the Pathways is an example where we were able to do that. Thank you.
Good points. Thank you. Do you want to go on to the next?
Yes, please. So the third goal is working with the MSBA, this is kind of, well, I'll just read it, I've read the others, too, sorry. By June 2025, in addition to progressing through the eligibility phase of the Massachusetts School Building Authority, the MSBA, process meeting all deadlines with required deliverables. Authority, the MSBA, process meeting all deadlines with required deliverables, Westwood Public Schools will develop and present a current space utilization report, which will inform discussions around potential redistricting and future grade level considerations district-wide. So we've talked about this a little bit as we've gone through our meetings. We've had updates. We talked about it a little bit earlier, right? We've had our monthly meetings. Um, we've now met, um, with all but three of the schools where we've looked at the current usage. Uh, we've have maps that show the current usage. We have maps that indicate what they would consider if we changed the configuration to key K to five or pre-K to five, um, different buildings. Um, the Robinson School Building Committee has, uh, been formed and has already had three meetings. Uh, members have had, they've had opportunities to tour Robinson and we have some more of those scheduled. And to that end, one of the things that we will be planning is also, um, public tours of Robinson. And, um, Mr. Lacoste and I have already scheduled time with, uh, Nick to develop a, a video, like a three to four-minute video tour of Robinson as well, too. So those are things that'll be happening as we move, um, through the spring as well. And we've developed, thanks to, um, Kathy Mucci, uh, we've developed a, we have a website for the Robinson School Building Committee and, um, we're, we'll be able to put all of the MSBA information, the different documents as they get approved, as they're submitted, and they'll, uh, they'll, they'll live there. We're also, one of the things we talked about in the meeting today, the Robinson School Building Committee, a meeting today, was developing, uh, an FAQ. Cause one of the things we realized is, um, we've had a couple of people join different meetings and, you know, it's something that we talked about two meetings ago and they're asking questions specifically today. So we're like, okay, well, we need to sort of capture all of this so that in some ways in which we don't find ourselves needing to review and or telling people, well, we just already talked about that. Um, but that's, that's the third goal. Um, any questions there?
Uh, you mentioned it earlier, but we're expecting a full report and presentation this year.
Yep. Yep. All right. And then goal four is focusing on the equity audit. Um, so we extended this goal because we started, we knew that we actually decided to, we chose AIR as an organization because of their two-year plan. And then it took us a little while to get started, so we've kind of just adjusted that timeline. So the root cause analysis event, which some of you were able to participate in, that took place on December 9th. The initial draft presentation of their findings has been created. That's being reviewed. Those findings are going to be presented to the school committee, um, in one of our upcoming meetings. And then, um, we also know that all of the school advisory councils or the SACs, that they're going to be discussing the findings at the building level, um, during some of their meetings. One of the things to be aware of is that this finding, these findings are really talking about the district-wide focus. The next piece of it is then becoming more building-specific. So I think that will be probably even more richer information for the SACs and/or they might be participating in that in a, in a different way. Um, and so that's kind of where we are with that. And again, a reminder to everybody that, uh, the first half of this equity audit was also supported by ARPA funding. And then we decided to go with this two-year process because we thought that that was the one that would be most robust and I think beneficial to the district. And so we decided to, um, utilize school choice funds for that second piece of it.
Right. Any questions on-
Any questions there?
Goal four. It kind of speaks for itself.
Yeah. And then the last, the last slide is, is just, uh, reminding everybody that in addition to those goals, we identified indicators within the performance standards. And so I've just shared what they are again as a reminder. Um, and then I'll be providing additional data. Sometimes the data for the goals will actually connect with those. I, I believe the, the feedback that I've received from you is that the way in which I shared the data and shared it, um, with link, with links and all in one document was helpful for you. So I'm planning to do that same thing. But before we get there, I'll meet with the subcommittee again. And so if I need to adjust the way in which we organize the data, we can do that.
Okay. Any final thoughts from the committee?
No, very thorough.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Okay, great. Thank you for sharing that. Uh, tonight, our next order of business is our FY26 budget proposal. Um, can you remind me, were you going to do a brief reminder on the slides or just a?
Well, we were going to kind of just talk through where we're at and not going through the whole presentation. Just remind everybody that the, uh, I'm just going to find it here for my talking points. Um, the, the main piece is a reminder that the, the recommendation that has been presented to you is a balanced budget of $69,388,572. Uh, we had, the, the different ways in which we, we shared with you to, to kind of meet that need. Um, we've talked about it. Um, over time, you've, you've been able to share questions and, um, we've had the discussions about them. We've also shared that in the, in the packet as well, too. Um, the, you know, overall, we know that this is, we, we are still not looking at strong foundational budget here, right? Um, we knew that, we knew, well, the conversation was a very difficult year last year. Uh, and we took the information that we received from the voters. And so we looked at FY26 and looked to see, okay, how can we, um, best, best prepare for, uh, FY26 and still stay within a, a balanced budget, um, at this time? The information that we shared with you showed a change and an increase in reserve funds that articulates that we think we can maintain this for three years, but in between FY28 and FY29, it's going to be really important that we identify new funding sources because those, um, those, those amounts within the offsets that exist within the revolving accounts, we, they might not necessarily be there because by then we would have hit the target amounts that we've established through the non-general fund guidebook, the NGFG, which was something that I think, again, um, I, I, I hope that you're very proud of. I'm very proud of the work that we did to create that. Um, and we're still getting a lot of positive feedback about that. And I think that's going to help us in, in the years to come. But the idea that we are not, we're not presenting this as ideal. We do not think that this is ideal. Um, we realize that this comes with some adjustments that can be difficult for some people. Um, I do think that based on the different needs that we have as a district within our facilities and within our operating budget, that it's important that we are coming to the, the voters with information that I think that then they can, that they're able to absorb and understand, okay, what these needs are. Cause like I said, I do think that in a couple of years, we're going to need to be asking them other questions as to how we can support our general operating budget as well, too.
Um, so we've, you know, had lots of, this has been on our agenda for the last couple of meetings. We have broken down, had follow-ups. The committee has asked questions, got questions from the administration. We've had a thorough budget hearing. Um, and to keep us on schedule for our FinCom, um, department review on Thursday, our practice would be to take a vote tonight. So does anyone have any kind of final concerns, questions, commentary that they'd like to add? Yep, Tom?
I just have, uh, one thing I just want to point out, and that's around the arts. Um, and that is at WA, if anyone's looking at the detail, it looks initially like a reduction this year. And just to remind people that it's been highlighted, that is actually just reflecting what's actually currently being done this year. Uh, and then the other one is, um, at the elementary level, it, again, on paper, it looks like a reduction in, in staffing. Um, but I do believe that that is actually going to attract a more stable solution for the, the music program at the elementary by having one full-time person as opposed to two slightly greater than half-time. So I just want to highlight those two, um, as efficiencies and, um, they're, they're not actually, they're not cuts per se in, in the programs, so.
Thanks, Tom. Um, yeah, Lori?
I have some remaining concerns about the reading and math interventionist cuts. Um, I understand that there was a change in criteria this year that, and that was the result, uh, that resulted in less students being eligible to be in the program. Um, and we have received feedback from interventionists and classroom teachers that this, um, there are struggling students who are not in the program this year that could benefit from it. Um, I believe that this presents a lack of equity because some parents cannot afford a tutor. Uh, they cannot afford to help their children outside of school, and I'm concerned about that, especially with the increased class size for next year. Uh, this could create more of a struggle for students and teachers. And it could create more frustration and dysregulation for, on an emotional level for students who need extra help. Um, and students may need more services in the future. So that's my concern about the, the cuts to the interventionists at the elementary level.
Okay. Thanks for sharing that.
You're welcome.
Yeah, Sean?
Um, related to Lori's point, um, and this is, I think it's the third year that we've had reductions to interventionists. Um, I guess, um, my, my thoughts are that, at least my view on intervention is that it, it's a way of kind of capturing the students who are struggling but aren't necessarily on IEPs, right? Some of them might be on IEPs, but not always. So I guess my concern is, is as we continue to make further and further reductions to the interventionist model, which we have, um, we could see an increase in IEP students. And, uh, I'll articulate it now that I think that in the long run, it might cost the district more money. Um, particularly, cause it, I mean, it's just a fact, it costs, if it, if we have a student on it, on an IP, it costs us, the district more money. Um, I don't think we will see the effects of that until several years from now. I understand that this is a necessity and I think Dr. Chu's phrased it right. No one's particularly happy or jumping for joy over this, this budget. Um, I would hope at a minimum that the school committee and the administration is able to look at that over the, uh, next few years to see what impact the reduction in interventionist per capita has had on, um, student performance and, um, whether or not that correlates with an, uh, increase in, in students requiring, um, IEPs and things of that nature. So those are my concerns. I, uh, I'm going to vote yes on this because I think that we don't have a better option, but, um, it's, I've said this before, uh, this is another tough pill to swallow. So.
I was just going to add, um, sort of related to that is that I, I thought one of the helpful, um, discussions that we, that were, was prompted out of the budget hearing was that the sort of, um, push to, or nudge to think about how are we inserting reflections and reviews into our, um, budget cycles. And so I think that that's, I, I, that's how I interpret my concerns that are related to yours, which is I want to continue making sure that we, you know, what, I almost sometimes feel desensitized to, you know, not have, be, not having level service funding. Um, and, but, but there are changes that we wouldn't make if we didn't have to. I think that we want to continue to look at class size, um, MTSS and say, are, are we, um, reflecting on what changes these are impacting to our students and, and how do we sort of keep building that into our, into our review process? So, yeah, you were going to say something?
I just thought it would be helpful. Um, MTSS was also down on my, my list tonight. Um, I know Valerie and I actually met recently, but just very briefly with, um, the curriculum coordinators at the elementary level, um, with this specific concern. Um, because like that, Lori, as you were saying, they had raised that issue, um, at the budget hearing on, um, the criteria for, for changing. Um, I think we might've gotten some different information kind of that night compared to things, what they've kind of since gone back and discussed. Um, but I, I came out of that conversation feeling like, um, they were looking at kind of what are the standards and, um, in terms of capturing that tier-two, um, those students and really being, um, I don't mean to say qualitative, but really targeted is, is the better word, targeted in the students that are truly meeting those needs. Um, and so I, you know, I appreciated that conversation that day. I think it, you know, Julie and Erin gave me confidence. They were very confident in what they were kind of putting forward as that, that tier-two intervention, um, and that it, it would be truly targeting the right students. Um, but my hope, um, going forward and then to what Valerie was saying is that we kind of figure out a way now going forward, how we can capture that data so that we can continue to review it, um, looking at our DIBELS, IREDDI scores, our MCAS scores, the number of students that are kind of coming in and out. Cause I know there's kind of two terms, you know, kind of that September to January and then January to end of the year of students who are kind of coming in and out. Um, and I think that's truly how we're going to know if what we've identified is successful, um, in, in being very target of, targeted, um, quality intervention. Um, cause really we should be seeing, you know, old students leaving and new students coming in. That's the whole point of intervention. You're not in there for two or three years. I mean, if you're in there for two years, you should be going, you know, for evaluations into the IEP process or whatever. So, um, what I would hope is that in advance, again, of that reflection of kind of when we start on the FY27 budget, that maybe we can even have a kind of, um, an update on even the data where it stands on that, um, intervention. Um, and, and just maybe have a, have a think about how we can kind of capture something that's easy as well, some sort of document or sheet that is easily kind of in push that we can kind of continue to track this, um, would be really helpful.
I know the budget situation is very difficult, uh, in terms of the coming year and in, and for this current year as well. And sometimes things look different on paper than in reality. And we've seen situations like multi-levels at the high school and language classes that we now know don't work out so well. So I think it is very important to keep tracking and to keep an eye on things to, to see if they're working or not.
Yep.
Thanks.
Yeah, so don't want to lose sight of the, um, the addition, service additions that are part of this budget. You know, the expansion of the medically fragile program, the REACH classroom at NavNACIT, and the sale program at, expanding to the middle school. Um, so like, I think it was, I think Mari, it was actually you said it in the budget hearing about like, you know, we're, things feel under, somebody had said, would things feel under threat? And you said, but we're, we're still doing good work, right? And so I don't want to lose sight of the, the additions and the, you know, creative thinking that I think that is going to make that a difference in students' days. That's also part of this budget. And I'll just throw another shout out to the NGFG document because I thi, I hope that that helps illustrate that, um, sort of, uh, runway that we're, we're building with those reserve funds and what that, how to communicate that to the community, so. So with all that said, um-
Could I just say one thing? Um, I think it's quite important on, to acknowledge, um, from our budget hearing that night, there was an awful lot of conversations regarding PE requirements at, at, at WA. And I didn't, I didn't want to not speak to it this evening. Um, I, I felt, you know, I appreciated all the feedback, the conversations, the emails. Um, but for me, it kind of came down to, is this really part of our budget for FY26, you know, conversation? Or is this more of a policy program of studies, graduation requirements conversation that's happening later? Um, and, and really I, I landed on the fact that it had never really been part of our budget discussions because they're already large class sizes. So I think, you know, the, we were getting, you know, a number of people saying the PE department haven't taken any reductions compared- compared to other departments. And, and I do appreciate where they're, you know, coming from in that conversation. But really, the other departments had, had kind of, we had consolidated numbers because we had class sizes of five, six, 10 students in some of those electives and class sizes. Whereas because of WA, they had already got class sizes of 30, 31, 32 kids, I believe, you know, at WA in, in terms of the PE side, PE classes. So that for me was really, I think, important to kind of say, I don't necessarily feel this is an FY26 budget question, but I do acknowledge there's another conversation to be had regarding graduation requirements, flexibility of electives at, at the high schools. So I just felt it was really important to kind of acknowledge that for me personally was where I kind of landed on it. But I just did want to acknowledge that, that this evening.
Yeah, thank you for bringing that up. And I would encourage anyone that's, that was following that or has concerns about that, that I think we, we will pick that up as part of a policy review and have a, have committee discussions about that as well, not just in the policy subcommittee. But this, because of our town meeting timeline, this is our budget and this is the budget vote. Looking at the agendas, I think it's probably like right after February vacation, we hope to sort of pivot to that. Part of the conversation. It doesn't have to go to policy right away.
Okay.
Give us a legal. Okay. Okay, so in, with that said, are there any final pieces? Otherwise, I.
Sorry, I just have one more.
Go ahead.
Again, and it was more just, I would hope that in advance of starting the conversation of FY27 budget, we do kind of plan on agenda either the end of this year or early, the start of next school year. Just that kind of review of the school year 25 and the impacts that the FY25 budget had. I think it will be helpful kind of to have that feedback after, you know, a full school year as we, before we kind of start down the FY27 budget.
Yeah. That, that's, I think I raised that during the hearing was it's, it's challenging the timing because we make decisions and we're making decisions now not knowing the true impact of what we decided last year, right? But it is, it's important to, to help guide, you know, the, the future look. So.
I'm, I'm, I know, I mean, I, just to summarize, I think we're hearing a PE requirements will be part of a future discussion. We expect and want to be updated on MTSS monitoring and reflections. And I would add, we say this, I think we say this every year, but I would just continue to add that to be kept abreast of any changes at the elementary enrollment with move-ins and stuff like that. But with all of that said, I would make a motion to approve the FY26 budget in the amount of $69,388,572.
Second.
Thank you. Okay, last chance. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, so if anyone is online and watching, we will take a brief intermission so that we start promptly at eight o'clock. It'll be the same Zoom link. So are you gonna leave it open and just turn off the screen or something?
Yeah, we can, we can do that.
Valerie, we also have a fee schedule. Do we need to vote on that?
Oh, my gosh. Thank you.
Oh, yeah.
So as part of our non NGFG, the finance subcommittee does touch on the fee amounts. We kind of built that into our review this year of the creation of that document. And so there were no recommendations for changing the fees for the 2025 to 2026 school year. Any questions? Okay, I'll take a motion to approve. Oh, I'm sorry.
Free school tuition. Is that full-time for everyone or is there a part-time option or how does that work?
Yeah, so it changed a couple of years ago.
It's full-time.
That's full-time.
And full-time is considered full, for full days.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. Motion to approve.
Thank you, Mari.
Second.
And Catherine. All in favor? Okay, great. So thank you, Tom. What I was saying was you feel free to use the same Zoom link and we will see you at eight o'clock for the start time forum. If you want to just.
You could just mute it and turn off the video. Motion, movement break? Our, our city two friends are gonna lead us in a.
I, I think we should reverse, have them sit up here. We gotta sit out there.
Sean and Mari.
Do you want to move?
Or, or slide, yeah.
Yeah.
With the students?
Yeah.
Okay.
Or do I keep the same order and I'll move?
Or just move the mics as well.
Are you sure?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I'm fine.
All right, so welcome, everybody, to our school start time open forum for eight o'clock tonight. This, for anyone watching, this is the section of our meeting where we are changing our format and trying to make it more accessible for all the committee members to see our virtual participants. We've set it up in this way, I think, to try to make it very accessible and capture feedback from the community. As, as we all know, we're considering a change in start times, which would result in the middle and high schools starting at 8:00 a.m. Grades three to five shifting to 8:50 a.m. and grades K to two to 910. We've put, a community survey was out for about ten, a week and a half.
A week and a half, yeah.
We've got a website on the district website, the landing page with a frequently asked questions, our past presentations. This information has been shared in principal newsletters. And we are hoping to hear tonight from anyone who would like to share their feedback or ask questions about it. If we have a lull, I've, I've looked at the survey and the 1300, I'm 1300. Yeah.
Close, yeah, I think, yeah.
1305.
Yeah.
There you go.
Responses that we got, so we can share some of that information. But I really want to make sure we're prioritizing hearing from the people who took time to show up tonight. So since there's no one in the room, we'll see if, if anyone on Zoom would like to raise their hand. And we will gladly take feedback, questions, or comments from the audience. Oh, yeah, I've got someone here. I can't read that tiny thing, so I'm gonna.
Katie Millis?
Yeah, Katie Millis. So I'm gonna let you.
Promoting Katie in. It's time for some classes, Valerie.
No. Katie, can you hear us? You should be promoted into.
It takes a moment sometimes.
Yep. Sometimes it takes, there we go. Can you hear us? Katie, if you want to do that part to just. Katie, can you hear us?
Here we go, yes.
There we go.
I'm so sorry. I, um, my husband and I are actually in the car outside the Millennium Building and we were just wondering where the meeting is.
Yes. We have Melissa Boyle coming to your rescue.
Good experience.
And for anyone watching, there is a door in like about the middle of the building, right behind Abbott, that is considered the main entrance. It's up a ramp. And if you walk all the way in the building to the back, there is a conference room where you will find us.
And there's like a whiteboard where it says school committee meeting.
Thank you so much. Sorry about that.
No problem. Okay.
Look at that for resourcefulness. I'm impressed.
That was smart.
Yeah.
Problem solving. Don't see anybody else with their hands up. Well, at least, at least we know. Jamie, you're coming in. I'm promoting you there. There we go. Yeah, yeah. Hey, Jamie.
Hi.
There we go.
Can you hear me?
Yes. Hey, Jamie.
I can't tell if you guys can hear me or not.
Yes.
Yes, we can.
Can you?
Yes, okay. How is everybody? My name's Katie Home, Twenty More Road. I have a few questions. The first is, do we know around the number of students that could possibly be affected by having earlier start times to their practices, meaning hockey or swim, the off-site, the off-site programs that maybe won't be able to get a slot after school hours and would get, would potentially be practicing before school hours?
Do, do you have a list of questions or do you want us to answer them individually?
Oh, however you would like to. I'm pausing for the, sorry.
Okay, well, we could, we could pause there and speak to off-site athletic practices. We have Principal Dan Toomey sort of pseudo-representing Athletic Director Jeff Bunyan tonight.
Yep. You know, Mr. Bunyan's had conversations with all of our facilities, off-site facilities that we use for the many different sports. They've all been positive conversations is with those sites, Westfit, Skate3. You know, even we use Nutting Field here in town for a lot of different things. And they've all been very positive responses that they're gonna work with us, find additional things, additional slots or times. And there's really, at this time, there's no, we haven't even explored the, the idea of doing anything before school. It hasn't even come up. It hasn't been.
Hasn't been needed.
Hasn't been needed.
So, so, oh, sorry, Jamie.
From a perspective, my son, my oldest, is at Neshoba Tech. And because their school start time is eight a.m., they have to practice before school for hockey. So they have a 6:00 a.m. practice at the Telford Forum. So I'm speaking from like that perspective of, you know, how many, if, if that ends up being a possibility, because maybe I'm speaking out of turn, but Mr. Toomey, would you say that there is a possibility that there could be before school practices if they can't find after-school slots?
That would not be something I'm in favor of. I would say it, it'll be after school, it'll be later. It's been positive relationship with Skate3 and the multiple rinks that they have to find us some different times and different slots after school. So.
Okay, so you don't think there's any possibility that they'll be moving to before school practices?
You know, at this time, I'd say, I'd say no. I mean, it's, it's.
Because it was a 30-minute change.
Yeah.
Mr. Bunyan told me that all of the facilities said that they'd be able to make that adjustment to go later, that, that amount of time. I think the initial thought was if it was a larger window, that it might have been more problematic for them. But when he approached the different facilities, they all said that they could make that adjustment and just move the Westford Academy practice time by that amount, the 25 to 30 minutes.
Okay. Again, I'm not, you know, saying anybody's wrong on this end, but because this won't likely be figured out before the time like are confirmed, I don't think that practice times will end up being confirmed prior to there being a change in the time. Or, or will that happen? Because 30-minute slots don't really exist in these rinks and pools. They're, they're our slots, right? So you're, you're pushing out or ahead, you know? I guess my, my thing is, is just I, I want to make sure like everything's thought of. Because if, if this does end up being a before, this before-school thing, now, mind you, I may not have any kids offended, affected by this because I only have one hockey player. But it is a very difficult thing to manage getting your children to a before the school, before-school practice while also trying to get four other children out the door on their, their respective buses. So I just think that should be something that, you know, maybe in the back of people's minds if there's any possibility that before-school practices are going to be unstable in this scenario. It sounds like they're not, but stranger things have happened where, you know, you can't end up getting that after-school slot because it's, you know, much later. Or, you know, if you're talking about nine, nine or 10:00 p.m. practices, which they do have slots for at, at Skate3. I don't know about pools, but, you know, you're talking about, you're, you're, you're cutting one for the other kind of thing. So that would be my perspective there. My next question would be about having talked to any D bus drivers and how they feel about having K to two students on the bus for an extended period of time in the morning and the alternative of having three to five students on the bus in the afternoon where I have grade three to five students and they are on the bus on the way home. Luckily, their bus hasn't had much action, but I know that other buses that are just traveling from Abbott to the Nav- traveling from Abbott to the NAB area have had to turn around to bring students back to the school due to behaviors on the bus. So now, these, these bus drivers are getting these kids on the bus, then driving to NAB-NASD School to wait for the NAB-NASD School students to be dismissed, managing behaviors there, and then having to drive their bus route. Is there any concern on, on that end from anyone?
Well, first of all, one of the things that D shared with us was the fact that they had done this, not necessarily with the two stops, but they'd had the combined ages on the same bus before in the past, and so, they, they didn't say that that was a concern from their end. One of the things that we've talked about as a leadership team, the principals have talked about the time that the students will be on the bus and the different things that, that they might need to consider in terms of trying to reduce that time, so that students aren't sitting for a long time idle on the bus, if you will. So that has been a part of our conversation.
Okay, so, it, like, D hasn't mentioned any concerns about, like, being able to manage behaviors for the kids that are on the bus for an extended period of time?
No, we did not service, we did not survey the bus drivers, either though I kind of, I expect the owner of the company to share that concern with us, and she did not, and we talked about it, and she talked about the idea of, again, that they've, that they've had students, the age ranges on the, on the bus before. And one of the things that, that we talked about at the leadership team, and would be prepared to talk a little bit more about tonight, was this notion of the amount of time that exists between the buildings right now, for example, I mean, Christopher Foley and Robinson are so close to each other, and NAB and Abbott not so close, and Miller and Day not close at all, that we talked about the differences, is do we need them all to be following the exact same schedule if we're looking at this window? Could we be making adjustments to decrease the amount of time that students are sitting and waiting? And I think that that's something that we're all prepared to do.
Okay, great, because I do think that, I'm not so much worried about the fact, I, I have kids on the older side of the spectrum, so I can't speak to that, that point of view anyways at this point, but I'm not so worried about the spread of the ages, I'm more worried about the bus drivers having to manage that on the bus, and I assume that, you know, unlike the high school where when they get to the school early, they are allowed to roam the school by themselves, that at the K to 2 level in the morning, you're not letting kids off the bus before school starts...
Right.
...to be able to roam the school, they're gonna be sitting on the school bus that they've probably already been on for at least 30 minutes, potentially 45, right? So, it, 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 it sounds like a great idea, but I do think there are some very real concerns that, you know, would come out of this...
There are.
You know, as far as that goes.
I think, and I think it's a good point, Jamie, I think there's also, there is a difference between, like, one of your examples was a bus needing to return to a building because of a behavior situation, which could happen honestly at any age level, and the difference being because the bus is en route, whereas what you're talking about is the time in which the bus is sitting parked at the school, in which case the bus driver is in a better position to be, if, depending on if the students are sitting for a little bit of time, that the bus driver is also then able to have their attention on the students because they're not driving as well. But that's one of the things that we've been talking about, because we want to figure out what are those expectations for those students, and, you know, how, how much can we minimize that time in which they're sitting on the bus?
Yeah, I think that is definitely ideal to minimize the time that, you know, those, those students are on the bus, because, you know, this goes back to, I, I do appreciate there being creative, you know, like, ways of, like, ways of thinking and trying different things and all of that kind of thing, but I do feel like it goes back to my same sentiment a couple years ago, where you're kind of sacrificing one, one subset of students to, you know, try to come up to a standard on another set of students that are potentially only gonna end up being up later, not, not because of a parenting issue, but because all of, everything got pushed later for them, right? Like, their, their activities are later, so now their homework's done later, and so on and so forth. So, I just hope that we're not trying to check a box here and make sure that we're, we're checking off goals that have been made by the school committee and the principals and the leadership team, and that we're really considering, like, that cost-benefit analysis of, you know, all K to, K to 12 students.
Yes, thank you, Jamie.
I think also one thing to note, just on the, the behavior part, or the bus driver's concerns, and just to note the seating, you know, on the bus, and that the idea would be that the bus would sit with kindergartners at the front, and that they would kind of sit by grade level through the bus as well. So, if there's any kind of concerns regarding behaviors, expectations on the bus drivers, even just having...
I mean, from my perspective, my kids were, were living at, at where I live, in my proximity to NAB, lots of things happened between my house less than a mile away and NAB School and just sitting in the parking lot. So, I, I get that, and I'm fine with like the fact they're leveled up, but still happens, you know what I mean? And so, lengthening the ti, the time on the bus, bus is only going to increase that, right? So, that's just something to consider, like, as much as, yes, I totally understand the point of view to put all of these kids on the bus at the same time, save cost on busing, all of that, but the longer that they're on the bus in a, you know, they're supervised, but they're not, there, there's a bus driver on there, but there's nobody watching every single move that all of those kids are making in a buckseat, you know? So, it just, you know, that, I think, needs to just be considered, you know, deeply considered for, for that type of thing. And I guess the, the last thing that I was gonna, the, like, other, that was, I was gonna ask about is like, I have heard through the grapevine with the, the kids that are, that do theater arts, you know, they, they usually have a time after school, this is for the high school aged kids, they usually have a time after school to like get work done and stuff, and now this, this is gonna push everything back, so then, you know, they're gonna lose some time because they can only stay at the school till a certain time. Again, I don't have a kid at theater arts yet at the, at Westford Academy, because my oldest is at Neshoba Tech, but just thinking, you know, it's another subset of students that if you're pushing all of their work back a half hour or an hour, it's not about responsible bedtimes at that point, they still need to get their work done for the next day, so if they're just staying up that much later to get everything done, what, where, you know, that, that cost analysis benefit, right? Like, where, where does that, does that work out for them in the end?
Thanks, Jamie.
Thank you.
I've got somebody else here on line two.
There are folks in the room now, though.
Yeah.
Yeah, I found them.
If you were joining, if you were trying to join Zoom to, to hear us and find us earlier, but, but public comment is available in the room if you want to come up to the microphone and share feedback, just...
Questions.
Or questions, you can start by introducing yourself, and I think there's a sign-in sheet for your name and address, it's part of the public record. Thank you.
Sure, speak in here?
Yep, thank you.
All right.
It doesn't amplify your voice, it's just for the recording.
I'm about to become like a Supreme Court Justice, so I'm getting confirmed.
Not done.
So, my name is Mike Mills, Katie and I have a kid in middle school, kid in high school. I guess, first of all, I just want to say thank you all for addressing this. I think everything that was just said, there's truth in all of it, for sure, and like, nothing is perfect and everything's got problems, and so I certainly respect that. I think for us, the reason we feel so passionately about this is like the mental health challenge, it is real, and I think we personally experienced that. And, you know, it's, it's not like we can just fix everything, you know, a 15-year-old, 16-year-old is only so easy to manage. We do everything we can, but they are not wired to get up this early. And on top of all the other mental health challenges we face, we lose 30 minutes of sleep every single night, and it makes it worse, and, you know, when you talk to experts and we get advice on this sort of thing, it's the number one thing they say, can you make sleep improvements? It's the number one thing we hear every single time to improve mental health, but, you know, our hands are kind of tied. And so, we see, you know, this, this change, although I realize there's a lot of logistics to work through. I applaud you all for looking at the actual research, like, this is not made-up stuff, it's not like, you know, one group of parents had this idea, I mean, there's real science behind this, there are actual reasons why this makes sense, and I can say, I can corroborate that with a little color commentary, that we see it too as parents, and it's not like we're not gonna do everything we can regardless of whether this goes through, but boy, it sure, sure would help a lot with, with mental health, especially for, for high schoolers, so, pretty much all I got.
I really appreciate you coming, right? Yeah, thanks.
All right, thank you, guys.
Yeah, thank you.
I've got J and J. I'm promoting you to panelist, yeah, you should be able to speak.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Yeah, we can. Can you just make sure to...
Okay, sorry about that.
Can you... Excuse me, sorry, can you make sure to introduce yourself and give your name and address?
Oh, sorry.
Thank you.
I'm 30, 10-year-old. Just want to follow up one of the comment, one of the previous parents made in terms of the, you know, stay up late to do, finish your homework. My son is already, is in the 8th grade, just based on my own experience, the, have to say, the elementary school, start from the, the lower the grades are, the workload is extremely light. As they going up to, so, like, now 8th grade, I can see a little bit more, and I heard in high school, the, the workload extremely, it's a, it's a big jump in terms of the workload. So, I personally did not see an issue with pushing back the school time by, I don't know, 30 minutes or even hour for younger kids to finish their homework on time. So, just my personal experience.
Okay, thank you for sharing that. Is there anyone else on Zoom that would like to speak?
Just check back. No hands up at the moment.
How many do we have?
Eight attendees.
Nobody else raise their hand?
So, we could take this moment to review the survey, so I've got, do you have that slide ready? I broke down the community survey, so we'll start with the high level. I hope you were all able to review it, I sent you it, the full file over the long weekend for some light reading. But the top question was ranking your support or opposition to the change. 59% are in strong agreement with this change, and almost 14% agree, which totals 73% of responses are in favor of the change. The following questions were to try to gauge whether we thought there was going to be change in participation to bus riders and early arrival options at the elementary levels. And I don't think it was as big a swing as we were expecting, so I've kind of left those questions for the, to the side for now, and then I focused on the few hundred write-in responses that we got. The, most of the write-in responses, the areas of concern that were highlighted, although some, some write-in responses were full support, so it's not that, it's not that there weren't, it's not that the only write-in responses were negative, but I wanted to just take a minute and highlight what pieces of information were raised as concern. And I don't think any of these are real surprises, but I wanted to capture them here. So, impact, worries about impacts on student after-school activities, whether those be athletics, like we've heard a little bit tonight, clubs, external programs outside of the district, and their jobs. I, I learned this from one of the comments, that Market Basket has a set shift for high school students, which is like 3:00 p.m. to 6:00 p.m., I didn't know that, so you can only work during that time if you're a high school student. The next, the next highest area of concern was impact to caregiver work schedules. The third most cited area of concern is elementary bus concerns, which again, we heard tonight about route length, behavior challenges, and understanding what does this mean to the numbers of riders per bus. And then the fourth most, the fourth sentiment most expressed is the idea that nothing is broken, so we should spend our time on other things. That's a paraphrase, because some of it was not worded as kindly.
Can I also just note the responses, the amount of responses we got to this, we got to the, the survey? Thank you to everybody who did respond, because it was, it was a really high response rate from the community, but I thought that was interesting.
I think one of the things I think about is homework load or behavior on buses, those are things that we're constantly thinking about and planning about, and I know this, the administrations of Western Public Schools, it's, it's not like it's all, it's all one thing, those are other things that are also being managed and thought about on a daily or yearly basis as well, so, you know, we, we've collected those concerns and we are definitely paying attention to them, but it's, it's, it's part of a complex picture, so...
Yeah. Do you want to speak to the student survey?
And then, yeah, we, with STACK, the Student Advisory Committee that works closely with the school committee on an ongoing monthly basis, they ran a survey in the high school just pre-Christmas break, winter break, so we had 432 responses to that, 69% of which was in favor. We just gave it a yes/no, the students really advised us on, keep it simple, stupid, so we didn't go into as much detail on that one. But the frequent areas of concern was impact on after-school activities, potential for no real benefit, that idea of only 30 minutes, and again, that logistical concerns of work, you know, transport, childcare, so that was the information. We had asked other information on that question, kind of, you know, would it change bus ridership, car ridership and stuff, and that's more kind of supposed to kind of give to our transport manager, and kind of to help us think in terms of planning, but for, for the conversation tonight, we kind of just thought this was the more important thing to, to focus on.
Tommy, do you have a question?
Well, just, I just want to let everyone know that we are also looking at the overall ride times too, right? We're, we're getting that data, so I don't know if we are presenting that tonight.
Yeah, I have some on that, too.
So, so it's, the, the only 30 minutes may not actually be only 30 minutes in some cases, so I think that's, that's also another piece to, again, it's a big puzzle, and, and these are all just, they're, they're concerns that I think we all are aware of, and, yeah.
Yeah. I think, oh, Nico? I was just gonna say, if the, just a continual reminder, please, if somebody jumped in and say this, if it's been 15 minutes, maybe you see numbers change on the Zoom, and I haven't said it again, but continue to remind people joining on Zoom to raise your hand if you'd like to join this discussion. But maybe now, if there's, if there are no active hands, would be a good time to draw upon our administrators who took time to come tonight. I know you've all been having conversations with your staff, so if anybody wants to kind of represent some of the feedback they've been hearing or weigh in on some of that transition logistics that we've been thinking about between the sister schools, Melissa's just jumping out of her seat, so I'm gonna pick on her to start, but...
Up to the...
Yeah, sorry, because the microphone won't catch you for the recording.
Are you in now?
So, I think it's a little bit easier for...
Melissa Boylan...
Melissa Boylan, Principal Miller.
Principal of the high school. I'm sorry, the middle school, Miller's school.
So, I think it's a little bit easier for our, for our pre-K to 2 schools, because it's really a, a five-minute change, so in polling staff, you know, the positive responses or the, it's only five minutes, and if it's what's better for older kids, you know, we support it, was 90-something percent. School advisory, parents on that were, you know, in support, given the research and what's better for older kids. So, we really, it's like a five-minute window. I would say... I would say, you know, for the, the bus and the behavior concerns coming from a K to five district, we had K to five students on the bus together, both ways. There wasn't a little wait period in between, but I would say we had no more or no less than bus issues than we have now. So, you know, you just, it kind of just, it works. And, you know, we still had kind of the kindergartners towards the front, you know, only the fifth graders were allowed way in, in the back. And, and then you make adjustments sometimes, or assign seats, or sometimes, you know, there were pieces. We had talked at leadership that, you know, you'd have to collaborate, maybe not Miller Day, but others with their sister schools. If there was like a behavior issue, yes, you might have to make a phone call to the other school to work it out. But we collaborate all the time, so that wasn't, you know, an issue for us at all. So I think that's all I really had.
Thanks for speaking. That specifically was raised in some of the survey responses about how to address, you know, an issue between a fourth grader and a second grader and obviously.
We have great relationships between all of them. I think it's important to note as well, just for anybody who hasn't followed along, to make it clear, we're not looking at, at developing new routes or combining those bus journeys for the Miller and Day schools because of the distance. So at the moment, the bus routes are only for, between Nav and Abbott and Robinson and Chris Foley schools.
I did, I, there were a couple responses about being a car rider between Miller and Day. So can you, can one of you speak to a little bit about, like, I, I think parents or caregivers sometimes feel that pressure to be like lined up. And, you know, that like, well, if my line, if the, if the lineup is at Miller at three o'clock, you know, but I'm, my kid isn't getting in the car until two fifty-five at Day, my poor kid is going to be left there last, standing alone. So I don't know if there's anything you want to add to that concern.
Sure, I mean, in, I would say in the morning, there's the.
I should have thought of it before you.
That's okay, I love it. So I would say that in the morning, right now, we have kind of that ten-minute window of, you know, students arriving and coming in. So there is, you know, yes, we have the cars lined up right at the beginning. But it's a trickle, it's staff for those, those full-time minutes. So I don't see any issue kind of in the morning with the drop-off because it's more fluid. Our afternoon dismissal is, is more once, you know, once the last car rolls away, then, then we're done. However, if we need to look at that and find that we need a window of, of time to, so, you know, parents aren't nervous that their, you know, child's going to hang out with me in the office until they get there, then I think that's something that we could definitely look at, especially between Miller Day, just because it is further, there's more traffic, it's busy, but.
Yeah, I, I don't see it as an obstacle.
Yeah, and some of those discussions would happen as it goes between both of the schools, I'd say.
To, to that point though, and this would be something that maybe Chris, you could chime in and if it's different in any other school, but the afternoon pickup, yes, we all know that at all the schools, parents arrive earlier than they need to, to get to a specific spot in line for various reasons. But once that starts, right, once the actual process starts, then, I mean, what I've seen is it's always very smooth. And so then there's not a delay there. If someone happened to be later in the line, it wouldn't necessarily have a massive impact about their ability to get to the schools, correct?
Oh, no, I mean, at Miller, it's, it's quicker than dismissing all our buses. It's, it's very fluid, so that's why we may need to add a window that, you know, we're waiting, but I don't see it.
I, I can personally speak today. I'm, ten minutes, it, it's pretty impressive quickly at, at Day, it kind of between Belle and the last few cars pulling in.
Well, and I just saw you nod when, when she said that the bus, that it's faster than bus dismissal. Would you all agree that the pickup, parent pickup is, goes faster than the bus dismissal?
No question.
Much faster.
Wow.
Okay, okay. That was not my experience at the middle school level. Middle schools, they release to the buses immediately and it's a different scenario. So the pickup took longer, but that's interesting because it's just different at the elementary.
And I would say, to speak to Miller, it's because of the arrival of the bus times.
Yeah.
If they were all there at dismissal time, then it would be quicker. But they, they trickle in up to ten or fifteen minutes later.
Well, and they also have to do with the ratio of students that are riders as opposed to bus, right? Moving, you know, fifty students as opposed to ten, just using numbers is, is different, so.
Does anybody else want to chime? Do we have any hands on Zoom? Would anyone else like to chime in on their staff or SAC conversations and feedback? Yeah, Pete. Pete Meyerson, principal of Abbott School.
So the feedback from, you know, from parents and from staff is the, as we brought up tonight, is just the wait time on the bus, and, and that's sort of an unknown. You know, when the kids, right now, they're between twenty, twenty-five minutes for the ride home, and that could be forty, forty-five. But I think it's going to be hard until we actually start it. And we talked to our leadership, meaning there is probably room to change, maybe five, ten minutes either way. And until we do it, do it for a few weeks, it's going to be hard. You know, if we can get it down to their waiting on the bus, maybe five, seven minutes, that's, that's pretty doable. And so, but it's going to take a little time.
Okay.
How long does it typically take to kind of get a bus loaded and off? You know, from when they pull up at the door, like, because you typically have the students kind of ready to hop on.
Yeah, so basically, we have three buses get there pretty quickly. So there, once we call those buses, within five minutes, they're out on the street.
Oh, wow.
And then we have a few, few more buses trickle in and a couple of buses trickle in. The whole thing takes about fifteen minutes, about two forty-five, they're, we're clear. Yeah, and probably about, for pickups, it's probably ten minutes, the parents who pick up.
The car line.
The car line. And that has got better the last couple of years. The first, I know I got here two years ago, it was a lot more, but it's much less with the pickups.
And for anyone that hasn't participated, I mean, you guys all have it, I'm sure, down to a science. Obviously, only picking up at my kid's school, but like, you know, somebody's out there taking down the names, the kids come out in an order. I mean, you guys have done it really well to, to make it sing like that, smooth like that.
And one of the things that we talked about, and I know we talked about with Dee as well too, is that the trickling in effect that takes place right now in the afternoon is because they've been out doing a route before they come to you. Right now, what we're talking about is buses will go from school A directly to school B. So they'll leave there at the same time, so there's not going to be that, there, there wouldn't be that same trickle effect of, did this bus need to wait a little bit longer because someone wasn't there to, to greet them or whatever the case may be? So that would also help us kind of shrink up the time.
Okay.
Along those lines, sorry. And I know we're looking at this, are we calling it two-tier now?
Two-tier.
Two-tier. So would it be two separate sets of buses? Or would it be buses going to the high school, middle schools, and then those same buses going to the elementary?
Same number of buses. Same, same number of buses.
Okay.
I just wanted, was curious if you, because I know at three, we, like, a lot of the conversations are at the middle and the high school, you know, the, the shift, but it really is a shift for the three to five. Have you had any feedback from staff about what that shift?
I would obviously like to start earlier, but again, to make this work. And I think as, as we talked about the research, the high school research, it's, it's, it's pretty clear. They need to start a little later. So I think that kind of trumps that.
I appreciate that, thanks.
Belle, do you want me to share some of the bus data we're looking at now? Because I think some of the conversations are kind of landing on that bus.
Yeah, sure. Thanks, Pete.
Um, I think.
Do you want somebody to speak while you?
Yeah, they won't.
Okay, do we have an, an taker to go next? Oh, okay, oh. Why don't we stay, yeah, why don't we stay elementary for now, just because she's going to bring up the bus routes?
Sharon Kelly, principal of Chris Foley. So we had a mixed, my SAC was in favor of the time change for the middle high school, but then concerned about the later start for the three to five, because we're very busy in the morning. So that's extending the EOA, the early arrival option. And one concern staff brought up is like, we have a hard time staffing that anyways. So having that additional time, would we be able to find staff to staff that for me and be there? So like four main things that came up was the concern of, is it twenty minutes really going to make a difference for middle high school, thirty minutes? Or could we flip-flop it and elementary goes first and then the middle high school go next? So that's an interesting thought. Holding the students on the bus, but between Robinson and Chris Foley, it's pretty quick when we get kids out and in pretty quickly, that if we did talk about staggering our times, that would be amenable, we thought that might be a great idea. And working with Kevin. And the other pieces, would the, might be a big shift for some of our staff with their own children's schedules? Because not everyone goes to West Republican Schools, we have staff that come from all, from all over. Positive things, we have some staff who aren't morning people, so like a later start would be great for them. Personally, I like an earlier start because I like to be out in the afternoon in the, in the light. But you make adjustments as you have to make adjustments. So I think that people are, we're thinking more of a shift because we are, we are starting later. Like at the three, at the K to two, it's like a five-minute difference. But for us, it's about a thirty-five-minute difference. But I think we'll manage it, we'll work together, I think, working with everybody. We do agree that the later start times and the more sleep for the older students is much better shift in that manner.
Yeah, in a vacuum, I think there's a lot of support for that. It's the worry about the impact.
Can I just follow up with Sharon on that point you, you made, some of the staff were saying about flip-flopping? Because I, I want to make sure that we highlight that. A couple of years back, there was some look at kind of doing something like that. And some of the feedback that came out of that conversation at the time was, it could potentially cost more for childcare, either to families or to the rec program in town because they wouldn't have high school students available. So when the start time subcommittee started looking at this, we did specifically discuss that issue, but we felt that it, it just wasn't fair to start that, we, because of the financial impact directly on families and, and the rec program and trying to staff it. So while we do acknowledge it, it just, logistics-wise, we were very, we kind of really made the decision that we wouldn't do that flip-flop, so.
A couple, just one other point on just staff, to support the staff. I have some staff right now that don't have to use that opportunity in their own towns and the potential that they might have to now incur a childcare fee for themselves so that they can come to school at that later time. Because some can get their kids on the bus and then get to work. Whereas now they might have to look into some other type of childcare option that they have not had to before. And then commute times, because some people do come from far away. Overall, I think people are in agreements of, of the later, the sleep time for the older kids, but I think that also like our kids, because sitting, I think, having them, I know K to two does the, before school care for almost two hours, I think that was kind of a concern, like, are the three to five going to be burnt out by the time they get to class? So just looking at those things and making adjustments as we need to, just like we talked about the buses and behaviors. And it's all about if we do collaborative problem-solving, training kids, making good choices. And working with DBUS, we work with them anyway. So I think any bus issues that might come up, we would be able to collaborate together and work on them.
Great, thank you. Just, that's something you said there about like potentially staggering the times. And I know Catherine's going to talk a little bit about this with the bus routes. But I, I just want to be really clear because it didn't hit me until we had had a conversation about it. But what you're actually saying is that potentially Robinson and Chris Foley might have different times.
Right.
Different start and end times than other schools in the district because they're so close. And to reduce the, I don't think anybody agrees that we want kids idle on a parked bus.
For no reason, right.
So it's, it's not that this twenty minutes in between sister schools is like this hard and fast. It's this first out-of-the-gate proposal that we're saying, here are the bounds that we're working on. But that there's, we expect, and even, I think Pete said it was, once you get, once you get in it a couple of weeks too, that we expect there could be further tweaks to keep making this improved if it went.
That was something that, that we had all talked about, was just this notion of, okay, wait a second. Are, is it, do we think that it's manageable to say, after a month of school, we might say, hey, we're actually going to adjust this start time to this amount of time? And, and we kind of all talked about that, yeah, we could, you know, with good communication and, and if, if you, if you, if you have the rationale behind it, then that makes a lot of sense to do that. So once we talked about that, it's not, you know, if, if we need to make an adjustment, we can still make an adjustment in this. And I know when this, when the subcommittee was working on this, they were really looking at a window. We didn't know exactly, we, we, we weren't even sure in talking about it, well, should the K to two go first? Or the three to five? We were like, well, and honestly, that didn't also matter to the matrix of, does the math work? And then we can look at, well, what makes sense developmentally? And that was something we talked about as a leadership team. So I think when we said that and we're like, okay, would there be problems if, say, Chris Foley had a different start time than Abbott and Day? Yeah, schedule-wise, we have to be mindful of teachers that we're, that are shared. We have to be mindful of meetings and things like that. But it's not something we couldn't, we couldn't overcome, yeah.
But also, they wouldn't be massive tweaks. It's not like we'd be saying Chris Foley and Robinson are, like, it's a five, ten-minute potential tweak as opposed to.
It makes it harder for those like early release reminders that, that some of us do district-wide of, you know, like this time, this time, this time. Now it'll be like six different, a grid maybe. But yeah, okay. I just wanted to really spell that out for people to think that through. Okay, thanks, Sharon. So we want to take a minute and, again, if anybody's on Zoom wants to raise their hand to speak, but we'll take this minute to talk through a little bit of the bus route data that Catherine has from conversations with Dee. Oh, yeah, Sean.
Real quick, Valerie, so one of the questions that I have, well, I think it keeps coming up, right? This concern about that the average bus time right now is what, twenty to twenty-five? And now we're looking at, as this wonderful grid shows, some of which are closer to fifty minutes. So I, I guess one of the questions that I have, and I think Catherine might get into this, is what, do we know approximately how many students this is actually going to be impacting? Who are now faced with a twenty to twenty-five-minute route? Who are now, in some instances, looking at double of that? Like, do we have a number or a rough approximation as to that, or is it?
I could pull that up, but I'd have to go back into the bus ridership numbers to see how many students are currently riding various buses. I think the big takeaway, Sean, is in the conversations I've had with Renee at the DBUS, and we can look at this a bit more, is that, you know, they've, they've tweaked and maybe created some new routes, but the actual ride time that the, from the time the bus leaves the school, the car park to the time they drop off, isn't really changing, or a, a couple of minutes. The, the time that's kind of when, if you see on that, like bus two, currently, the average ride time for that bus is about twenty-three and a half minutes, but it can kind of max as about twenty-five minutes. The estimated new ride time is, they're kind of saying, it's about twenty-five minutes, which is kind of what it is right now. But we've put in that twenty minutes of transition time. But as I think Pete was saying, they're getting a bus in and out in five minutes at Abbott in, in that transition time. So really, that twenty-five minutes for only one route of the day, bearing in mind depending which, if you're in a, if you're K to two or three to five, is gone from maybe twenty-five to thirty minutes. So that, that's why we wanted to put that range in, because like that, in having this conversation, I think it was really important to show, this is kind of more definitive what we think the ride will be, but at the moment, we're allowing for that twenty minutes of transition time.
So just so I have this right, so in many ways, this, this is, it shows that we're kind of under-promising in hopes that we're able to over-deliver, is that right?
We've kind of done the worst-case scenario.
Okay, all right, thank you.
We're assuming the max twenty-minute window and we, you know, we're having these discussions about potential sister schools adjusting.
Yeah.
I think, I think one of the bigger things that we took away from our conversations is that there are also, right now, currently, is a lot of buses that are not being fully used. There are some very empty buses. And not to sound cliche, but we, you know, we're looking at this model also in the lens of the fiscal responsibility that we have to the community. And I think those times on the right, the forty, forty-five, fifty, is, is the endpoint. And we're going to try to work that down with Dee, even, even smaller, right? What, what we're going to see is more students getting off at certain stops, right? You know, in higher-density locales in Westford. We're going to see potential for additional stops along the way. But what we've heard from Dee is that it's largely going to keep, you know, we're talking a minute or two when you add those stops and along the route that already exists or that, that partially adjusted route that isn't going to be too far off from what's currently routed.
Sorry, just a follow-up.
Yep.
And feel free to interrupt me because I'm asking a bunch of questions. But the, the, okay. So presuming that Dee is able to get these numbers down, is that something that we would be looking at come next fall? Or is that something that we think that they'll have an idea as of, you know, this spring?
I think the biggest part of the control of those numbers is what happens between the, in between. I think the biggest part of the control of those numbers is what happens between the, between the schools. So I don't think it's something that we'd be able to really address until next fall.
Okay.
It's not about Dee getting the numbers down. Dee has provided us, well, this is what the typical ride is and has been a part of the conversation to say, if you add this extra stop of going to the school, it would be about twenty, twenty minutes. But the, I think that's going to take collaboration along the, the buildings to say, you know, how much can we shrink that time?
Okay, which we would, in, in theory, know, we'll, we'll have a much better idea of that come September.
Yes.
Okay.
Right.
So really, we'll be, i- if we approve this and we move forward, we'll be really asking for that flexibility come the fall to say, look, we're going to, we're going to, these are the times we're going to work with now, but bear with us and we're going to, we're going to throw some changes at you as the, as the year goes on, which.
Minor.
Yes, not, yeah, not an hour, but, but we actually do that already with the buses anyway, because the route is set out with.
It always starts here.
And we always kind of feel it out for, for two, three weeks and then we go, oh, well, you don't actually have to go outside until X, Y, Z time, so.
And, and just to reiterate, because I know that there are probably people who see the fifties and are.
Alarm bells are.
Yes. But, but I think it is important that we say this is the outer bound that we are, think that it's, it could possibly be, because if we do find that between the sister schools, we're shaving ten minutes off, now that becomes a forty and thirty-five and it immediately comes right off. Like to, to, to reiterate Catherine's point, that the route, the kids still live where they live now. So it's just that the route is being picked up and picking up the, the sister schools at the bus stops together. It's not that a route is being doubled in length.
Yeah.
It's that the route is running and just going to two stops. And we are hoping that there is efficiencies and tweaking between the schools for that transition time that would keep, continue lowering and lowering and lowering that number.
Essentially, a lot of the routes were doing it twice over, minus, minus some tweaks. They were essentially doing the same route twice. I, just to say, the reason why we put in that twenty minute, where this twenty minutes originally came from was actually Day and Miller, because we were kind of looking, it's a kind of a thirteen, fifteen minute drive. So let's say a twenty minute gap. And that's kind of a bit for the start times, that's where the twenty minutes came from to start with. And, and that's where we've kind of left it for now. So it's not.
The parents and the buses, a little security, you know, in, in that distance, but.
Yeah. So it wasn't Renee at D bus, sorry, saying, you know, oh, we can't do this. We can't do Nab and Abbott with, with a twenty minutes. I mean, she most definitely kind of felt we're being very over generous with the, with these four sister schools with the twenty minutes. So it's really actually Miller and Day that kind of were dictating that this twenty minutes. So we, we could choose even tonight to, or as conversations go on, to make that suggestion, you know, to stagger the start times and not have all six of the elementary schools doing eight fifty and, and nine, ten. And that was just the start of the conversation to bring it to the wider community and to, for leadership to be involved.
Yeah.
Okay.
So I don't know.
Okay. So why, why don't we keep going to the principals?
Yeah. And also just to say, any of these, these routes all subject to change until registrations are in and confirmed.
Registrations will. Sorry, one, one question about Abbott and Nab, and this is not necessarily knowing the, the routes. Would there be, like, the bus leaving Abbott in the afternoon, going to Nab and then having to come back to Abbott to start dropping off?
Probably.
You know what I mean?
Right, like Providence Road or something?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, so there would be a little bit of that back and forth. So just, just something to, and I'm sure Dee will have to figure that out as well, so.
Yep. Okay, why don't, if, again, if you're on Zoom and you'd like to speak, please raise your hand, otherwise we'll take another. Dan, maybe to the hot seat? Okay. Dan, you can just come back in February.
Chris Sardello, principal at Day. So I did present this to our school advisory council and we did have a healthcare professional who is one of our members, who was ecstatic and she said that she reiterated that data that you looked at and is very excited about this proposed time change. So there's that. But we do have a mixed bag with our faculty. Some are very much in favor of it and they feel like what's best for students is definitely something that we should be considering. But there are other faculty that are concerned about that time that's spent on the bus. It's not much of an issue for Miller and Day, because we will not have that issue of children, you know, K through five being on the same bus, but it is going to be for the others. And we know as principals that the more time you spend on the bus, whether riding or waiting at the school, means more unexpected behaviors are going to happen. And it's not because it's a mixed group of students, it's just that time that they're sitting there. And so I'm happy to hear that you're flexible with the amount of time that they will be spent on that bus once we figure out what's going on in the fall. So I think that will alleviate some of the fears. We do have some veteran staff members that live quite a, a distance from the school, up to an hour commute. We're concerned about that and that would not work out for her family if, if in fact, we went with the proposed time. And there were some faculty members that were concerned about being able to offer clubs after school because of that twenty-five minute difference in time. So if we were able to tweak that even by ten minutes, that would be amazing, because I think it would change people's minds about whether or not they'd be able to offer those opportunities to our students.
Thank you.
Do you want me to go up in middle school?
Go ahead.
Hi, Patty Demmons, assistant principal Blanchard. For us, we had positives, also for Stony Brook, not too much of a dramatic change in the time and it could have some benefits. We're hoping that it will reduce some of our toddies. And we know it aligns with, you know, the school with the athletics. We don't think it will impact our athletics or afternoon clubs. We had a couple of negatives from the staff. About eighteen percent total said that it could affect their availability to stay after school or for extra help or activities. Some didn't think the twenty-five minutes was big enough for a difference. And some were worried about the routes with kids sitting on the bus. So basically the same what we're hearing across the board, but we do know that it's better for the students for the, the sleep, so. Positive.
Thanks, Patty.
Thank you.
Thank you. So I did a quick poll with, first of all, with my, my, before I talk about the poll, my school council, my, we have been in favor of a school start, start time change for ten years. When I was first a dean, I was on the original school start time committee. I believe that was two thousand and seventeen, where we, you know, we had met at the, the town, the fire station as an original committee and it was part of that original proposal. So yes, we have been in favor of this. We've watched many schools over the years in the area change their start times to later start times. So it's, you know, as far as after school activities and all those things, I, I, I don't see a reason that would stop me from saying it's the absolute right thing to do. So it, it will help. I, I did poll the staff and it was a mixed results. It was about fifty-three percent were in favor of it and really for the supportive students. The forty-seven percent, it became more of traffic and after school availability and changes to their own personal schedules and some of those things. Then there was also another subset that felt like it wasn't enough. And it ties kind of into my last point, which was, are the buses still going to be picking up so early and dropping off so early? And I've said that at this committee, and that has come up numerous times, it's something that we are actively working on to have an appropriate drop off time at Westford Academy. And, and if that's the scenario, I, I would say that there would be a much more support for it just based on if it's thirty-five minutes or forty minutes more of sleep of every single day for the students.
It came up in almost every conversation with Dee about, first of all, the rationale as to why are buses still dropping off early at WA? I will say that there's not a, there's not a solid answer for that, other than we continue to say, if we make this change and if you tell us that we're able to do this and we're able to still do this with our existing contract, then this is when they would be able to drop off. They cannot drop off, you know, before, before X amount of time, whatever that, whatever we determine what that is, because of that exact reason that you're, it's defeating the purpose. It's similar to your, your reason answering Jamie's question earlier about, we're not exploring doing things before school in terms of practices or rehearsals, I mean, yeah, practices or rehearsals, because that defeats the purpose.
And I think, you know, you'd mentioned there, Dan, and it had also kind of come up about, you know, it's not, is, it's not going far, far enough in the sense, you know, we, it's well established, the American Academy of Pediatrics, say, the earliest time for any high school is eight-thirty. In a perfect world where money was no object, I don't know what that's like. You know, that's where we would love to be, but in order, you know, for everyone, we looked at that. So we had software that we were using that could allow us to kind of test using current bus ridership data that we had. We, we had this company consult with us on this. And we looked at eight, eight oh five, eight ten, eight twenty, eight thirty. I think if we wanted an eight-thirty start time with it, like going no later at the K to fives than kind of like nine fifteen, I think we had said, it was going to double our amount of buses required in order to make that happen. So eight AM became the sweet spot in that we could make some change, and it's about progress, not perfection sometimes. We could get to eight AM without, within the constraints of our current budgeted bus time. So we absolutely had discussed, could we get it later? And I think it's also something that is not off the table longer term if we, you know, find lots of money down the back of the sofa. Or, you know, if we do get to the, because I know the conversation is going to happen at some point regarding redistricting the, the K to fives and potentially making neighborhood schools. And I think that allows us to, if, if that happens, that potentially allows us to move the, the needle a bit more on the start times at the middle and high school.
Further, fur- further route efficiencies, like that example of the Abbott bus driving a Nab and then back to that neighborhood. If you have a section of kids that are all going to Abbott, then the routes are all closer.
Yeah, you, you lose that transition time, that need for that transition time at, at the schools. So it would potentially give us more, an opportunity to reexamine it. So it's not like this is it forever, but it's at least making progress now in the hope that in the future we can revisit it.
Does anybody have any questions for Dan? Excuse me? Nope.
Do you know what the largest wake, early drop off, if you will, that kids are like, what time is the earliest bus that gets there right now?
Some days it arrives at six fifty-three. Most of the time it's, the average time is seven oh six. And six fifty-five, a couple roll in.
So that, that's still half an hour.
Yeah.
That's another half an hour.
Our schools start to seven thirty-five.
Yeah, we were talking for, I, I was there with you, Dan, that Friday morning. It was, we're talking forty minutes plus, you know, for these kids and they're all waiting, waiting outside the theater, in the cafeteria, just the, the bodies keep mounting and.
And we have spoken to, to D bus about that.
Yes, yeah, that is, that is a priority.
That has to, yeah.
Yeah.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Another reminder that if you're on Zoom and you want to speak, just raise your hand. Or if you're in the room and you've thought of something else. I'll share a couple more thoughts, points I saw in the survey. There was concerns about if you have elementary siblings and you have one car rider and one bus rider. If the times are too close, you can't get home for the kiddo off the bus. Another impact I saw, and this kind of speaks to a, a theme we're hearing, but, and, and I know you're, you've said before, Catherine, that in your opinion, that this is progress, not perfection, that this is one of many tools. I know you, as a subcommittee, you've had that conversation, but in some of the responses were about like, okay, so this is, this is one thing, but when do you look at homework policy? Or are there rules about or guidelines about activities should be done at this time? And, you know, how else can we partner with families to sort of even educate on sleep behaviors and sleep improvements that can be made and stuff? So I think that's, should be also kind of part of our discussion about, not this year, but how it, how it fits in holistically to the district.
And the conversations about homework, the conversations even about times that activity should be taking place, that all, at, at least six through twelve came out of challenge success as well too. I mean, and so we've done that work, we'll, we'll continue to revisit it and look to see how, how that's been working. But those are examples of things that we were proactively trying to make adjustments that existed within the constraints of our schedule that we could still make. Now this was the, this was really the last piece of it that, you know, previous committees had hoped to explore. And so it's good that you've been able to fully explore this in a different way than they've been able to in the past.
Yeah. I think on the homework and the activities, it might be worth a review anyway, because I will say, I have got, I've had conversations with parents, particularly up at the, the kind of the high school level, is that, you know, kind of, it's not necessarily happening in, in, you know, what's the, the policy versus the practical what's happening. And so I think it's definitely worth a kind of a review. I see this as just, you know, part one of that, because, you know, it's interesting that, that social emotional learning of our students. So it's maybe time to review again, kind of what's happening to the students with homework and, and after school clubs and stuff.
The last point I want to raise from the survey summary I have is a lot of requests to, if you make, if this change happens, to keep the early arrival option times the same. And not only that, but there have been some points raised about, right now, we have a fee for the whole year for, no matter, it's not prorated, it's not based on usage, it's just participation, it's not participation based, is to consider with this change, changing that model of fee to either, I think, smaller chunks of, throughout the year, so that you can sort of gauge your usage. Or by day, I don't know how, how that would work, keeping track of, of that. But these are all pieces that we can continue to discuss over the next couple of weeks.
I would just say, I would, I, I think we've talked about some of those things in the past. By day, that would be, that's not practical, because we have to staff it, right? So you have to have an idea as to how many students you're expecting. But, but whether or not we broke it down to half a year or some, that, that might still allow us to. You have those estimates, you know, you have people signing up.
I wonder if the by day is, well, we would need this Monday, Wednesday and Friday, but not Tuesday, Thursday type deal, which.
Not like impromptu.
Oh, gotcha.
But just like.
They're showing up at the door with, you know, cash in hand and we're like, no, 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 sorry.
Her commission's three days a week, every week.
I would, I would really support and appreciate if we could look at that. Any, any kind of flexibility would be great.
So I just want to use everyone's time wisely, right? If, if we're petering out on community feedback, what I'd like to pivot to is what we think as the committee is next steps.
I did talk to the chief.
Oh, okay.
Right, so just one last piece of information. I called Chief Chambers and shared with him what the consideration was, that he had an understanding as to what this impact might be in traffic through town. His response was that, well, yes, it would, would impact traffic. He said that typically traffic starts to pick up around eight o'clock through town. But the other piece of information that I had forgotten was that there's also major construction that's going to be taking place on Boston Road, maybe for the next two years. And he said.
Starting in April.
Okay. And he said that's going to impact us as well. And so he said, we'll work around this. Most of the, it, the impact would really be WA, because all, all of the other schools really have other ways to get there for the most part. And then the time that we were talking about for the elementary schools wouldn't make that big of a difference. So he really said, you know, Abbott and WA being in the center of town. But he just said, it would have an impact, but yes, we are also part of the traffic in general. So, you know, there, it's hard to say if it would have a tremendous impact or not. But he said, I think you're. if it would have a tremendous impact or not, but he said, I think your, your, your students and, and parents who would be driving to WA might want to consider that that might add, you know, five minutes to their commute time.
They'll obviously be putting a plan in terms of managing traffic.
Right, and so, but we talked about it, and once he heard the impact, and he heard that, you know, the shift and, and really what was happening at the elementary schools, he really didn't have any concern, and both of the middle schools are, you know, so far apart that it's really just the impact on the center. He said the afternoon wouldn't be a problem, it's just in the morning and just really people who would be trying to go from one part of town to WA if they needed to use this center to do that.
Okay, thank you.
I have one quick question.
Yeah, please.
So did your survey find out whether or not this would impact bus ridership? So in asking parents whether or not they would be more likely to drop off children at school or take the bus? Because I think that would have an impact on us for sure.
So it was, it was a goal of the survey? I think it got a little confusing with how it was worded. We asked, does your, does your family currently use the bus? 70% said yes. And then with the new start times, would your family be likely to continue using the bus? And it's 66% yes. With some like, no, I'm not sure.
And a 10%, I'm not sure.
Yeah, right, so, you know, I, I think I was expecting like a big swing. It's pretty similar for the early arrival participation.
Well, that does make sense, though, because the idea is that there might be some people who do not currently use the bus, who because of the start time.
Right, there's a swap, you can't see.
Right, so like, when you're saying like, there's a 10%, I don't know, well, those questions don't necessarily, that, those cohorts don't necessarily mean it's the same people.
Exactly, yeah.
You don't see switches on either.
And, and a switch ends up neutral for ridership, right? So like, I, I think it tells us not to expect a massive change.
One way or the other, yeah, I agree.
A massive net change.
And you could have some people who their question really is, what is this bus experience going to be?
Right.
Before I make that decision.
Yeah, yeah.
So I think.
Well, that's good news, because a massive change in drop-off would significantly impact how we do things at the day school, just because of the logistics of the parking.
Yeah, that's right.
Thank you.
I think you did a good job with the questions, that's why I was saying that.
Oh, thanks. So we should figure out what, if there's any outstanding information that the committee needs, what other steps we see needing to be taken, when we think a vote might make sense. Those are all things that I'd like to open up for discussion at this point.
I think there's two things I wanted to kind of note tonight, or one of them was, I really wanted to make sure that, that the, the start times committee, we weren't coming saying, this is a recommendation, this is what you should, we should do as a school committee. We wanted to come saying, if this is what we want to do as a school committee, this is the option.
Right.
So I wanted to make sure there was kind of no bias in there to begin with, that this was, this was giving us the choice. The, the thing for me is really just looking at the sister schools, that K-25, and if we can have that conversation about, can we actually tweak those start times potentially now before we vote? That we wouldn't necessarily vote on a 8:15, 9:10 start time, but can we actually consider and have that discovery, conversation? And maybe it's kind of really throwing it back, sorry, guys, I know you have a lot of work, to leadership to say, what do you think is possible? You know, in terms of that transition time of, of what could make work? I, I would like to see kind of that feedback more specifically on.
But not right now.
Sorry?
But not right now from them.
Not tonight.
Not tonight, no, no, no.
Because I'm looking at people.
Sorry, no, go away. And have, have a think about.
I think, I mean, I will say, I think, I think we can look at that and we can talk a little bit more about it. It is going to be something that it's going to have to.
I think it's going to have to stew for a little while, because I think the discussions that need to happen.
I mean, we do know that Christopher Foley and Robinson are right next to each other, right? So, I mean, we know that that's the first one that we're like, they're just not going to need 20 minutes. So we can think in terms of what could, what could, what could that window look like? And what would that impact be if it was different? I think we can kind of have those philosophical conversations about it. I don't think we're really going to know what the difference should be between Abbot and Abbott, because I think they're far enough apart with the train track that it's just enough that I think they'd have to really wait to see what it's like in practice.
And I think it's worth noting, though, it's not just 20 minutes of a drop-off window.
Right.
Because it's technically 30 minutes, because we typically open the schools for drop-off 10 minutes before classes start. So right now, it's kind of like a 30-minute window of drop-off time, so.
So I think we also need to, when we're having those discussions, keep in mind that we're not just talking about buses. We, we are talking about those parents that are, are picking up and may be at the back of the line, for whatever reason, at the first school, and therefore they're going to be, although again, they should also be.
And that, and that speaks to the window that Catherine's mentioning, that all of the schools already have with the drop-off.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's got to be real intention about where things stack in terms of the order. Even like the buses, the longest bus routes between sister schools, we'd like to get them out first and foremost, right? You know, it's like, yeah, you have to be deliberate.
So do, do we think we need a February 3rd meeting and a February 10th meeting to nail this down? I, I personally would think we would like to not have this carryout over vacation. If, I think people want to start planning if this is, if this is happening. I think it, it trickles down to a lot of discussions we have to have about logistics, like, do we change the bus pass registration window this year and try to move that up a bit? So, and I think even just the vacuum of space to let it linger, right? Like, I want to try to limit that and think about decide, a decision from the committee before February break. So at the moment, I think our schedule is the 10th.
No, the 3rd.
The 3rd, sorry, thank you.
Yeah, the 10th is tentative.
Tentative, thank you.
Can I just note on the bus registration deadline? I, I think we're going to look at moving that regardless of what the vote is, based on requests from central office staff.
Okay.
So it's, that's not necessarily tied to this.
Does anyone have thoughts on what our meeting schedule should be like and how to make this decision?
Does anyone feel like we need a lot more discussion on this?
I don't think that we need a lot more discussion on this. I have a, a question, so is February 10th a tentative meeting, meeting, or it's tentatively on the schedule for February 10th? I guess I understand.
It's, it's on our, it's, we have it listed as a tentative school committee meeting because of, the next week is, is the break, so we were like, so it's on there as a tentative meeting.
I'm going to just take a minute and say, we're pivoting to logistics and stuff. I know this is past your bedtime.
I'd love it if we can release them.
Yeah, for sure.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you so much for coming tonight.
Dr. Chu, just while it's in my head, is it also something you could have a conversation with leadership? That we would kind of have a, a pause on tardies or whatever for, you know, that 20, 30 minutes.
Okay, hold on, I want to stay on schedule and, and vote for a minute.
I, the reason why I'm saying I don't think that we need more discussion is because I think that we've surveyed folks, we know what the issues are. The feedback is very consistent, the feedback is very consistent throughout. So I don't think that there's any issues that have not been brought to the fore, and folks have had an opportunity to give feedback, a lot of different folks have. So I don't want to like, sound like I'm being callous, but I think that we've definitely have the feedback. And now it's about, like you said, Valerie, you know, there's, there's someone that I work with that often says that uncertainty causes anxiety. And I think about that a lot when I'm working with my team. And so I think that I agree with your sentiment about, you know, folks know that this decision's on the table. They've been giving us feedback consistently, and I think that making an opportunity for folks to know when the vote's going to be, and having that be as soon as possible, I think might be much more helpful than giving more opportunity to discuss the same issues that folks have been very clear about. I think the feedback is very clear.
Yeah, 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 I don't think anything was.
Inconsistent, right? I don't want to sound callous, I'm just trying to say like.
It's more is, is every, is any of the seven of us unsure that they couldn't be ready to vote on February 4th? Is there, is information you're missing as a committee member?
I'm definitely ready to vote right now.
I mean, I guess I'm just reflecting on our turnout tonight, and wondering if that's, the absence of engagement is also telling us something.
Yeah, I, I don't know, Marissa and I were joking about that, but it's, it's, I think it's reflective elsewhere. I, I'm unaware of us having other surveys that have 1,300 responses. Our emails have been consistently, we've been receiving plenty of responses from staff and community members. So I think people are just engaging in different ways. And actually, one of my suggestions was going to be is to have whatever emails we've gotten to the school committee general mailbox, to have those as part of the record for the night that we vote. Because I, I do think that, I mean, what, we had three, three public comments and questions, so I, I think a lot of it is coming in from, in different ways.
Yeah, and I think people are giving their feedback, right? Like, I think if they feel like if they've, know what the issues are.
I mean, I know we, I know we heard Dan speak today about representing Jeff on the facilities. I guess I.
Athletics.
Yeah, sorry. The offsite facilities. I guess I just wonder if there's any other, is there, is there any further step there to take to show that we've done due diligence with those partners that give us the confidence that we will find practice time? And I don't know what those conversations have been like, but.
I mean, I, I can ask Mr. Bunyan, I'm not sure if there's a signed agreement that exists in, with everybody as, as to when they do that, and if they're prepared to do that. I just shared with you the conversation that he had with me, which was, he talked with all of them, and they all said they could make that adjustment 30 minutes later, because it's not a significant amount of time, they would be able to do that for Westford.
That also goes to having a vote sooner, is if we take a vote.
Yeah, more time.
Then, then they can say, hey, this is what we have, and can we, we have, I don't know if they do, you know, this is our agreement, we're just going to continue next year, you know? But the sooner they can get out there with their requests, the more likely they're going to get what they want.
I'm not overly concerned about that either. I mean, these are, most of these are private facilities, and if they want our business, then they're going to work with us, so.
And, and just to note in an earlier conversation that Jeff Bunyan had with us and the committee, he had said like, that 8:00 AM was like the optimum time to shift in terms of balance. Like, we could get that later time without, it was like minimal impact, if any, on athletics based on it. So he had even said himself that that 8:00 AM time, he was like, even once you go to 8:05, then, it was like, okay, then we have to start thinking. But 8 was the, was the time that he even felt himself was very achievable, so.
Yeah, he attended a couple of those meetings.
He did, yeah.
He would ask them to go to those, yeah.
Okay. If we are looking at February 3rd, is it something we, you could put in your February 1st district-wide email?
Yep.
Do we think another blurb in the principal newsletters makes sense to announce a vote?
I think communicate seven different ways, seven different times, which is where I, I'd rather over-communicate it than have anyone come back and say, I didn't know you were going to do this. You know, you didn't, you didn't communicate, so however we can get out there, even if, you know, select board can, you know, say, hey, like, the way that we, we will publicize some of what's going on with them sometimes, it, it may not hurt to just have it out there.
I didn't mean to interrupt, sorry, but like, the other piece, though, is if anybody listening right now, and/or as we, and as we communicate that, if you're deciding that you want to say that you're going to vote on February 3rd, that's a typical business meeting. So that means if someone wants to say something that they haven't said, they'd have public comment to say it. But it's not going to follow the same public forum that we just had, which was a back-and-forth discussion and question-answer. That's what we're saying, right?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, I think that's a consensus, then. We will plan for a vote on this February 3rd, and we will communicate that accordingly. Okay. Catherine made a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Valerie's second, all in favor? Okay.